Time is now 5:45 on this 26th day of March.
Yes.
And this special meeting of the El Campo Independent School District Board of Trustees is now called to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted and we have a form of present. If you please stand up. I'll say a prayer and have the pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and ask that you guide us and bless our efforts during this meeting. We pray that the decisions we make will be pleading to you and those that we serve. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, thank you for being here for this special call of meeting. This is a public hearing. Mr. Wells has been working excessive amounts of time and you should have some information at your table in front of you that is from the Texas School Safety Committee and is our emergency operations plan. Because we are continuing to work in collaboration back and forth, I wanted Mr. Wells to just kind of give you an update on where we are. We didn't want to have a special call meeting on April 13th, so we thought we would just combine it with today's meeting and let Mr. Wells give you an update on our emergency operations plan.
Basically, what we were doing, what we were charged with was making sure that our plan was actually updated and that you guys were informed of any of our deficiencies. For example, one of our deficiencies was as minimal as something with the superintendent statement and his signature and my signature and the emergency management coordinator's signature not all being on the same page because it ran to the next page. So that basically was out of compliance. We've actually corrected that. Prior to this meeting this evening, I was actually on the phone with our actual auditor. We actually went through the plan. We updated all of the things that actually had like dual roles, like we had a cybersecurity coordinator slash IT director, since it's the same person. However, that basically is not allowed on the plan. You can only have one person on this, so it has to either be the IT director or the cybersecurity. And like on other things that we had multiple roles where it said like the HR director and the principal, you can only have individual roles assigned to anything with safety and security concerns. We also updated some of the stuff. Instead of saying basically local law enforcement, it has to say El Campo Police Department. It has to say DPS and it actually has to have the El Campo Volunteer Fire Department. That's pretty much the gist of it. We've presented all of our audit findings in previous meetings all through last year, whenever we were doing the safety and security updates. We always kept you abreast of anything that we found to be an issue and everything is actually going to address on the safety and security concern for government of school safety for our kids.
The only thing I would like to add, that we have had four schools that have had their door audits. All four had no findings, which is a good thing. That means that everything was bound to be locked and secure. And I think Ms. Cooley's campus is the only one that has not been audited yet.
That's correct.
Is that not correct, Ms. Cooley?
That is correct.
And so we expect Myatt to have their inspection sometime in the month of April, which makes sense because her campus won't be testing. So anytime they do the audit, they won't be coming in and disrupting the testing environment.
And one other addition, you'll actually start to see all of our exterior door labeling actually going up. Maintenance is in the process of actually installing that because we have to be in compliance with every exterior door being identified on the exterior of the campus and also on the interior of the classrooms so that actually patrol or security people can see those numbers from the street. So we're actually getting all of that stuff actually put up right now so that we can actually be in compliance. Because we're probably expecting a big audit sometime from the state here. It could happen next week or it could happen next month, but I feel that we're going to probably get chosen.
Remind me again, what state department is auditing? This is auditing.
So our door audits are actually monitored and done by Region 3, who basically puts it in the system and they put that in the system for TEA. Now, our vulnerability assessment is actually done by the state of Texas, by TEA, where they actually send people down and...
Oh, they come down?
Well, they don't. It's just, this is going to be our first year to actually probably experience one if we actually experience one. That's one of the new things that they brought about since the UALD situation.
So does anybody have any questions about our safety and security? I can assure you that all of the items that we have discussed in the state required closed sessions, then we came out into open session and made motions, those have all been implemented. How we keep our students and our staff safe and secure district-wide. So we continue to work with the El Campo Police Department and the Warren County Sheriff's Department on certain things. We are continuing with our Guardian program. We will have another class that we are working on the next phase of their training and our present Guardians have completed all training at the Lower Navidad River Authority. Is that correct? No, La Baca Navidad River Authority. So all of our present Guardians are in compliance and up to date.
On page 38, you have David Downs as a member of the district board of trustees other than the president.
Yes, we'll make sure. Are you?
I'm going to make sure mine isn't. I don't know if I can find you anywhere.
Yes, this is a public hearing, so you're more than welcome to review the materials and then when you're completed, we will go to adjournment and get ready for the 6 o'clock meeting.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Good choice. Okay. If I need to... I don't think we made it to the meeting. Just for discussion. Okay, you can scabble us out then. Mr. President?
Do you want to hit the gavel? No.
Time is now 6 o'clock on the same day of March. And let the record show that the meeting was duly posted and we still have a form of present. And I will say a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we are thankful for your presence in our lives and ask for your continued blessings and grace as we do the important work that we have before us here tonight. Guide us to make sound decisions that will benefit our students and community. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Mr. Durtick, I just spoke with Ms. Garza and we have no one signed up to speak at the beginning of the meeting in the public comment. We will have a public comment that will happen during the, right prior to the presentation item of 5C2, so we can move on to the next item of action, which is recognition.
Sure, that's the part we like. Who's first?
Ms. Fellers.
So I'm very honored to introduce one of our teachers, Holly Guthrie. Holly sponsors an organization called TSA Texas, no, excuse me, Technology Student Association. And she's brought a group of students today to honor them because they have advanced to the state level in their respective contests. It's more than one contest that they competed in. This is actually a really cool club to get to have at the middle school level. Not all schools get the opportunity to have this. We have a pretty big group of kids that are moving on and I'm just, I just feel very blessed that we have a sponsor who's willing to put in the time and the effort after school to make this thing, make it happen for the students. So Holly, return to you where you can introduce the individual students.
All right, so back at the 1st of February, we did regional competition and we took quite a few students, I want to say around 15 or so, and 10 of them have actually advanced on to state competition. So Eric and Morgan Prater, they are competing in challenging technology issues. It's a speech event. They placed third in their event. Guys, go along with Chris. Then we have Zoe Barrera, Vivian Daniel, Emery Lemons, and Jack Wertham.
Eric and Morgan, you guys can come right back in here and we'll just start lining you right up in here.
These guys placed third in children's stories. So they had to develop a story, they had to create the book, they had to do the illustrations, the whole nine yards. And this is really exciting because we haven't made it to state before in a while with that one. Then we have Vivian Daniel and Noah Santiago. And they placed first in coding, so I'm very excited. We might have a chance to make it to nationals this year. It's very exciting. And then I have Kayden Baldwin and Liam Vazquez. They placed first in their event of electrical applications. And then Vivian and Emery placed second in forensics. So they had to take a test over forensics information and if they advance to semifinals at state, then they will have to be understanding some other key elements. And then finally, we have Ava York. She is advancing to state in the area of career prep. She had to look at a theme, create a resume and a cover letter, and submit that to the judges and they were very excited to advance her onto state. So if she makes semifinals, then they will do a mock interview with her resume. So very excited.
Ms. Kaufman, could you help arrange those individuals?
Yes, sir.
And Ms...
Yes, sir.
Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, sir.
Are there any parents here that I think it'd be nice if we could recognize their parents?
They are back here in the back. Zoe, there you go. Vivian. Emery. Eric. This is the most... Morgan. What's going on here, Noah?
Last year?
Yeah.
I think we had three or four last year.
Just had to get busy at the school.
Jack.
Yeah.
And Ava.
Congratulations.
There you go. All right, you're good, guys. Stand up tall and look this way. Here we go, Ms. Guthrie. Ms. Guthrie, yeah, she's in there. Don't worry about your, just hold your folder down. You're spread out.
We want to get all your faces.
Yes, that's... All right, one, two... Keep smiling. Y'all stay there because we got a few parents that are going to, they almost have to be straight in front for their photograph. Sorry. Keep smiling for the paparazzi. All right, very good. All right. Great job.
So we leave on Wednesday to head to Fort Worth.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Ms. Guthrie, I am certain that the newspaper's going to want to get your picture, so that's where you're headed, right?
Uh, no, I was just going to keep me clear with her about emailing her names.
We can do all the things we need to do. Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, they got, chumming out five years of...
Okay, Coach Reeve.
Powerlifting.
Yeah, I'm just, you can feel the silence with your golden throat.
Well, I'm going to feel the silence with something not powerlifting for just a second. So got a chance to go to the soccer, both of our soccer games last night. Epic battles. The girls won after going into not one overtime, two overtimes, not one set of five goals shootout, but then a second set and had a big win and it was awesome. It really was. So really proud of them. And then the boys followed that up, was down 1-0 at halftime, come back, they win 2-1. So the girls, that's the first time in school history, it was my understanding that the girls have been to the third round of the playoffs in soccer. And boys are obviously going in the third round of playoffs. Girls are going to play at 6 o'clock at Pridgen Stadium in Cypress on Friday against Hampshire Fanette. And the boys are going to play at 7, no, 7 o'clock, I believe. I want to check myself now that I'm sitting here in an official board meeting. I shouldn't have mentioned this. But yes, 7 o'clock Friday night at Mercer Stadium, playing against Brookshire Royal. So congratulations to our soccer teams. The other thing that I will say real quick is I was informed today, so our boys golf team has been on a roll. They've won every golf tournament we've played in this year with the exception of one where we got second place. But yesterday, we scored a team score of 309, which is a very low score and we are looking into this, but maybe a school record for low score in a tournament. So they're doing well and got a lot of good things going on. But we're here today to talk about powerlifting. Had a great powerlifting season on the boys and the girl's side. Had several boys and girls that went to state in powerlifting. Several of them are repeat achievers, so to speak, is going to the state meet. This is Coach Matthew Bakara's first year here with us in El Campo. He's our head powerlifting coach. And then Bryce Hale is our assistant coach. They've done a great job, but they're here to recognize our kids, so I'm going to let Coach Bakara do that.
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to kind of give you an overall of the year from the beginning to where they ended up. I think it kind of gives you guys a great image of what they kind of came up with. And so I'm going to start with the girls and then I'll go with the boys. That way they get their individual recognition. So Ally Spadicueta, just kind of raise your hand, say hello. So overall, she got second place at regionals. We placed second place as a team. You know, we kind of, last year, we had, we were in a regional championship, it was a great fight between us and Vida again. But Ally Spadicueta, she increased overall 50 pounds from her beginning to the very end. She placed 11th place at state with a 445 total in the 97-pound weight class. So that's our smallest girl. She was 97. Her biggest lift was 205 on the deadlift, which was, we were not expecting. She did a very great job. Adrian Rodriguez, she's a regional champion. She placed 14th at state with a 600-pound total. Over from the beginning of the year to the very end, she increased 70 pounds. Her best lift is the one that we care about the most, is deadlift as well. She deadlifted 290 pounds in the 114-pound weight class. Bethany Huggins is our other regional champ. She placed ninth at state with an 895-pound total. Her biggest lift was squat. We also had best squat at regionals as well with a squat of 355 pounds. Our next one is Scarlett Martin. She played, she was a regional champion. Her list goes on a little bit more. She's our only senior on the team. She totaled, she owns the total record at 905 pounds. She also owns the squat record at 385 pounds. And we had a great chance to, oh wait, Bethany increased 110, I don't want to miss that. And Scarlett placed seventh at state with a 920 total and she increased 100 pounds over the year. These ladies did an amazing job. From the very beginning, I mean, you're talking anywhere from 50 to 100 pounds that we increased. And in a year, which not even a year, it was two months. I didn't know if y'all knew that. We did our season in two months and we increased about 50 to 100 pounds. That's, I mean, that's amazing. And we ended up finishing with a second place total, so I just want to congratulate them and give them a round of applause. I'm going to go with the boys. Give me a chance, I know we'll probably take a picture at the very end, but come on with the boys. Sure will. Sure will. Ally? They are, ma'am.
Adrian.
Bethany.
Bethany.
Scott. Congratulations.
Yeah, open them up so we can see your names. Hold it there. All right, one, two, three.
And if you have some parents, if you have parents here that want to take pictures, now's a good time for those.
Yes, now's a great time. Okay. Come on, boys, let's switch up. Let's switch up. Okay? All right, our boys this year, we placed third as a team. We had a chance to win it, which I don't know how long it's been done. I know it's kind of a new program. I know it kind of came back, kind of left, it came back, but we placed third. So I'm going to start with Dallas Ansualdua, which is right here in the middle. Dallas is a regional champ. He owns the bench record at 310 pounds. Now, something that I'm going to tell you, Dallas weighs 123 pounds. Okay? And I'm going to say that again. Dallas benched 310 pounds. And that's because we did more at state. We did 315 at state. So we actually re-broke the record, but it doesn't count because we're at state. But he reset that record. He increased overall 90 pounds over the season. He placed 15th at state with a 975 total. Isaac Mendez. Isaac Mendez placed second at regionals. He was 10th placed at state. Now, Isaac, this is going to be sounding really great. Isaac increased over the year from the very beginning to the very end at 320 pounds. So that's very, very impressive. Isaac's best lift was 590 in the squat, which I think we could have got better. I know he wants me to mention his deadlift. We got 560, so I'm going to go ahead and mention it for him. Okay? Aiden Garcia. Aiden Garcia is another regional champion. He was third place at state this past year with a 1545 total. We had a chance to win it. Things didn't kind of go our way, but we could have had a state champion walking in here today. And I mean, it was very close. There was like a 40-pound difference between us. I mean, it's a couple of lifts. So he increased over the year 100 pounds. His biggest lift was 590 and we should have got 615. We definitely would have got it. I know we would have. And his was a 14, 1545 pound total. Camden Phillips. Camden Phillips is a regional champion. He also owns the bench record at 465 pounds. He sat there at regionals. He was second place at state, which is our highest state finisher. We were, now, we couldn't catch the guy in first. That guy was crazy. Crazy, 800-pound squat. But I'm going to tell you an interesting story about Cam because he's our senior on the team and so is Aiden. But Cam finished second place with 1710 total. An interesting thing that happened, we were at state, I bumped a 675 on squat. Cam looked at me like I was crazy and he said, "Coach, I want to do 700." I said, "Cam, I don't know, man." And I said, and he thought I didn't believe in him. He said, "No, I'll give it to you." And sure enough, I said, "Sure enough, let's go do it." And we squatted 700 that day, which is our highest squat of the year, and he did a great job. Great job. And so that's it. I just want to commend you boys. You had a great year. Great year. Dallas. Aiden. Isaac.
Kathy. Congratulations, Dallas.
Make sure you get a picture, open up your name so they know who you are.
All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
You're up, Mr. Flainer.
I'm up. So when I came three years ago, we had a lot of different people that were complaining. And I don't know, Mr. Brock, how old is the, that old marquee right there at Avenue F in Newark? How long's that been there?
It's been there since 2000.
2000?
Yeah.
It's been there since 2000?
Yeah.
Yeah, people were complaining about the letters falling off, falling, I mean, just wasn't working real well. So Mr. Fuchek and I went around, spoke to a couple of businesses and through their generosity, Prosperity Bank, you know, we spoke to Link Lutrick, Mr. Zalman, and we've got two representatives, Stephanie Jansen and Karen Newark, that are here to represent them. But they wrote a check for over $57,000 to put in that marquee, which has been outstanding and helped us with the communication. And it'll look real nice when we get the new building over there too, right?
Yes.
Ladies, come on.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for your business and we're always here to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Make sure Link knows we're glad you two showed up rather than him.
I will make sure it's him.
Considering disinvited from...
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, on to the consent agenda.
Right, yeah. Okay. Everybody knows what the consent agenda is. It's a recurring, according to local policy BEA, consent agenda is provided that includes items of a routine and recurring nature grouped together under one action item. Everybody's been furnished with background material on all these items. Is there anything out of the consent agenda that someone would like to pull out?
Yes.
Nope, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda then. Kathy?
Say.
By Rich. Any discussion? All those in favor say, raise your right hand. About that. Any opposed, mentioned, noted, or passes, unanimously. Move on to...
We'll move on to the presentation items and we have our assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, which is Alyssa Stari. And her first item is going to be the presentation of the Capturing Kids' Hearts implementation. Yes, ma'am, I'll get it for you.
Thank you.
Is the projector on?
Yes. I'm ready to go. So you've heard us talk about capturing kids' hearts over the past few years. It's something that we've really put a lot of heart and soul into, time, commitment to. And so I wanted to kind of share with you how it's impacting our schools and where we're at in implementation. So first, I want to tell you, you know, what is capturing kids' hearts? So it's basically a process that is trying to create positive relationships with students and with staff and enhancing their communication skills, their accountability, a culture of respect on all the campuses. Their mission is to win the hearts and lead them to their personal best. The campuses follow an Excel model. We follow it across the district. It's not just on the campuses. But basically, we look at how can we engage students? So this is when we want to greet them. We explore, so we're asking them to share good things. We want to get to know them better. We communicate and by doing that, that's how we deliver our message, whether it's our lesson or anything we want to tell people about or information in a meeting. Then we empower and that's basically what is our next steps? What are our expectations of what we're talking about? And then we end with a launch. And this is how we close a lesson or close a meeting. And so this is the model we follow anytime we can across the district. So far, as far as training goes, we have, over 80% of our professional staff has been trained in capturing kids' hearts. Myatt and middle school have both been trained in capturing kids' hearts too, and that training actually allowed them to do some kind of leadership things where they got to know themselves as individuals better so that they can better do a better job at building relationships with kids. And then we also have...
So, um, you've heard us talk about capturing kids' hearts over the past few years. It's something that we've really put a lot of heart and soul into, time, commitment to. Um, and so I wanted to kind of share with you how it's impacting our schools and where we're at in implementation. So, um, first I want to tell you, you know, what is capturing kids' hearts? So it's basically a process that is trying to create positive relationships with students and with staff, and in enhancing their communication skills, their accountability, a culture of respect on all the campuses. Their mission is to win the hearts and lead them to their personal best. The campuses follow an Excel model. We follow it across the district. It's not just on the campuses. But basically, we, we look at how can we engage students? So this is when we want to greet them. Um, we explore. So we're asking them to share good things. We want to get to know them better. We communicate, and by doing that, that's how we deliver our message, whether it's our lesson or anything we want to, uh, tell people about or, uh, information in a meeting. Um, then we empower, and that's basically what is our next steps, what are our expectations of what we're talking about? And then we end with a launch. And this is how we close a lesson or close a meeting. Um, and so this is the model we follow any time we can across the district. Um, so far, as far as training goes, we have over 80% of our, uh, professional staff has been trained in capturing kids' hearts. Um, Myatt and Middle School have both been trained in capturing kids' hearts too, and that training actually allowed them to do some kind of leadership things where they got to know themselves, um, as individuals better, so that they can better do a, a better job at building relationships with kids. Um, and then we also have training set for June 4th and 5th, um, for in ju- this coming up summer, um, for any staff that we have not trained in any new hires that we get. So that way we can continue to train and have, uh, everyone on board with this process. Um, we're at a point now where we'll probably do this training every other year instead of every year as we had done before. So the biggest celebration I have to tell you is all five of our campuses have been officially nominated for national showcase school, and this is a huge, big deal. Um, as Mr. Callahan shared a little bit earlier, um, a national showcase school is, it's, there's not, not everybody gets this honor. Um, and so for all five of our campuses to be nominated to do this, um, is, it's just, it really says, um, what they're doing on these campuses. So what I want to do now is kind of share with you a little bit about each campus. Um, I'm gonna read from my notes here because I don't want to miss anything, so pardon that, but, um, we're gonna start with the high school. Our high school campus makes intentional connections with students each day with strategies of greeting and affirming each other. An example of this is every student knows and comes to expect Mr. Pannish at the gate every morning delivering a handshake and a friendly good morning. This year, the campus established a principal's leadership court, which consists of approximately 20 students. These students attended a Better Than Good conference this year. They had the opportunity to discuss what they want their campus to be and how everyone can work together to accomplish these goals. Last school year, this, the campus started the implementation of the Lead Worthy Character Lessons and have continued them this year. These lessons have a specific focus such as courage, perseverance, and teamwork, and give students the opportunity to discuss and relate this in depth. The campus has done various activities throughout the year that provide opportunities for students to reflect in a positive way. They engaged in a one-word activity in which students wrote down a meaningful goal for themselves using just one word. So an example of this would be like patience. If I need to work on patience, then I would just write the word patience, because that's a goal of mine. In a kid, in addition, the campus did a gratitude project where students wrote why they loved ECHS on a heart, and then displayed them all together, creating a large heart, allowing others to see what they wrote. And then our middle school, as you know, was currently, is currently recognized as a national showcase school. Um, the campus continues to build and maintain a culture of respect. They start each morning by greeting students in the entrance areas of the school as the students enter the classrooms. Affirming others is an important part of their daily culture. One example of this is students writing a positive note to their teacher on a hand to give them a high five. The campus also did Grateful Turkeys at Thanksgiving, in which students were asked to write feathers on four of their teachers, for four of their teachers, then attach them to the turkey on the teacher's door so that the turkey just grew over time. In order to promote a "we" culture, the campus intentionally creates team-building activities. An example of this included playing a bingo game schoolwide. At the end of the day, students could be heard saying "we almost won" or "we only needed one more number", which shows how they connected with their, with their class and their teacher. Middle school uses a campus currency system called Birdbucks to acknowledge students who demonstrate the characteristics set forth by CKH. The administrators issue paychecks at the conclusion of each grading period, desert, with designated dollar amounts for As, Bs, or Cs, and bonuses for attendance, discipline, and participation in other activities. On paycheck day, the students collect their earnings to which they can cash them with the bank or hold them to use in the store, save up, or use for event purchases. Events happen once a month. Some examples from this year are Snow Cones and Kickball Day, a VIP lunch, Ice Cream Sunday Bar, Hot Chocolate Bar, Picnic in the Park, and Teacher Versus Student Volleyball. So that's our highlights for the middle school. At Northside, the use of Capturing Kids' Hearts has fostered relational capacity among colleagues and cultivated strong bonds between students and educators. They start each week with students engaged in Lead Worthy Character Lessons, consistently emphasizing core values such as respect, responsibility, and kindness, has cultivated a shared, sorry, a shared understanding of expected behaviors and promoted a sense of community among students and staff. The lessons have not only improved student behavior, behavior, reducing instances of bullying and conflict, but also enhanced student, student social emotional skills such as empathy, self-awareness, and conflict resolution. Northside also focuses on affirming and celebrating others. Staff members have created a norm in the classroom to celebrate students, and while in their P A, PLCs, they explore each individual and gain a deeper understanding of students' needs and learning styles and the needs of their content teams. The use of the Excel model on the campus has empowered students to become more active participants in their own learning journeys. One example is allowing them to use their own voice to create their social contract. This allows them to establish ownership of their behavior and how they want to be treated. Because of the trust that is built within the classroom, students are willing to take more risk, actively participate in discussions, and collaborate effectively with peers in the classroom. And at Hutchins, they engage students and staff daily through a variety of interpersonal interactions and intentionally designed activities. All are greeted and welcomed with sincere positivity and, and, and attention at the start of each day in class. Teachers model the use of affirmations to build self-confidence and praise others for committing to and following agreed-upon expectations. Students in turn have been empowered to affirm each other using a variety of activities facilitated by the teachers. Positive phone calls to parents about their children being affirmed by classmates or evidence of the way, of the processes, I'm sorry, of these processes that are also engaging the families. Social contract expectations follow students throughout the school day, where they are used to maintain engagement and accountability. Students serve as class raters and affirmers, demonstrating their abilities to determine if expectations are being met, to make course corrections and adjustments as needed, and to thoughtfully praise one another. Staff are encouraged to affirm each other by writing positive remarks using Happy Mail that they can send each other, and through the Friday High Five, where those remarks are added up to the weekly rap email for all staff members to see. At Myatt, Myatt uses the capturing kids, the use of capturing kids' hearts has truly become the culture of the campus. It is the way that they do business. From staff to students themselves, you will feel the welcoming environment when you are on campus. Teachers on the campus embed the social contract into daily lessons to create a foundation of respect, ownership, and commen- community. For instance, the three-year-old early childhood special agent education class uses the social contract to practice learning their names and take ownership of classroom expectations. This early introduction fosters a sense of belonging and accountability. There is also a system that allows students to recognize and affirm their peers when they are following the social contract, allowing for ownership and accountability of behavior at that young age. To foster the meaningful relationships among the staff, optional CKH socials are conducted throughout the year. One recent example of this is the opportunity for the staff to play an education, educator edition of Family Feud. These events allow teachers to spend time together and make connections that they would otherwise not have the opportunity to do so. The culture of care continues within the staff with the use of verbal and written affirmations. At Myatt, a spirit stick is passed around where the recipients of the stick are publicly acknowledged by a colleague in a meeting or gathering of the campus.
Can you go back to that for just a second?
Yeah.
Because I know you, I know you put it on there, but I just wanted to make sure that you recognize that.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Myatt is correct. Yes, Myatt is our other nationally, uh, recognized national showcase school currently right now. Yes, I apologize for missing that.
No, I just know that you.
Yes. I could go on and on, like, like this, this is just, in fact, I'm fixing to hand you a copy of their, um, Evidence of Impact that they submitted, um, which just gives you more details about what they're doing, so you can read at your own pleasure. But the campuses do a great job, and I want to commend the, uh, teachers, the staff, all staff members, the principals for their efforts and their dedication to this, uh, process, because I believe it is making a huge impact on our culture. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Does it help also with your discipline?
Yes, we, they have seen a drop in discipline numbers, yes.
And outside of the, the great work that Alicia does leading this, we do have several of our principals in the audience and some of our assistant principals, so if any of you want to make any comments, I think now would be a good time to do so.
You, you said it is making a difference in discipline?
Yes.
Is there a metric that, that we could see?
Um, they, I, I don't have their, their.
Well, is Sandy still here? Did she?
She stepped out.
I, I do know that this was part of Sandy's, um, information, and Patrick's here. Patrick, do you have any? Because I know you've been in meetings where they've talked about that, and they presented to the.
Yeah, they presented at T A S S P last summer about a drop, and I'll, I'll be honest, I can't tell you the specific numbers from last year that they.
We can give them.
Yeah, yeah, if y'all wouldn't mind. I think we'd all like to see.
Sure, yes.
See, it's, I mean, you say it's, it's working, and I, and I, I would believe that, and, and, but if we could see the numbers, it would really make a difference.
Well, and then old Paul was keeping, has he left?
There's, you know, we put quite a few dollars in this program and.
Yes.
I, I think if you'll, I, I will, I wish Sandy or Paul were here. I thought they, I mean, I saw them earlier, so I, um, but I do know that they have data to show a drop in student referrals, et cetera.
They do, and that data had to be part of what they presented to even be nationally showcase nominated. So I do know that they have the data. I just, I don't have that, visit that number, so.
How long have we been doing this?
Um, well, we really got back focused on it after COVID.
Okay.
So, um, prior to that, we'd been doing it, but not as, um.
So like 2021?
Yes, somewhere around, yes.
I, I would say 21.
I know, I went years ago.
I would say 21, 22.
Yes.
Hi Sandy, we're not trying to put you on the spot, but we're gonna put you on the spot. I know you presented it. The board was asking about the impact on discipline from CKH.
Oh, yeah, I wish to have the numbers for you. We presented that at 2024 Summer Workshop for Principals. And, um, we did everything like the reduction of D AEP placements, uh, out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension, teacher referrals. And I believe that we saw, I think it was 16% reduction in D AEP placements, 26% reduction, I believe it was 26 of, uh, that was our highest reduction in teacher referrals. Um, you know, by the second year of using it, we saw.
That, that's what we liked.
A quarter, a quarter less of teacher referrals. So it's really good. And also too, like, you see a lot of evidence, like, so once we kind of got it rolling too, like, we had a substitute teacher that said, well, I made a mistake today, and the kids corrected me. And I, I thought, oh, no. I said, what, 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 what happened? And they said, well, you know, I got started on the teacher lesson. And they said, no, 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 we do good things first. And the teach, the sub did it, and you know, that was her first introduction to it. And so she said, well, I don't know what to do. And the kids said, we know what to do. So they let it. And then, um, I was interviewing somebody in, uh, January or February for a, 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 a long-term sub kind of position, and, and anyway, and there's somebody who's relatively new to our community, and I was going through like what our processes are, things to do. And I said, we do some capturing kids' hearts, and what that means is, and I started describing it to her, and she said, oh, my first grader is talking about this at home. And she said, now it makes sense, because the first grader came home and was like, you know, what I shared at school today, or my good thing today was. And so, um, uh, you can see the evidence of it district-wide, like, people are, are, parents are seeing it, stuff are, um, it's really interesting to see the parent surveys and stuff too. But yeah, it, it has had an impact in middle school discipline, and if it's gonna have an impact in, in discipline in middle school, it'd probably have an impact everywhere.
Um, and I know Sam has only been there a year, but Mari and Elizabeth have been doing it for a lot longer. Do you all have anything you wanted to add?
Um, one thing that's really neat, uh, for us is you create a Process Champions team on your campus. So it's, um, composed of, um, staff on your campus, and so they really do a lot of leading as well. So it's not just the principals, you know, trying to make all of this happen, right? So, um, they meet monthly, uh, they plan things, they, um, get things going, remind us of what we could be doing, what our focus is for the month. And so, um, they, they send out resources and things like that for the teachers to use in their classroom. And so it's really something that everyone believes in. They've seen what it does. You know, they've seen that kids act different, um, when they use these processes. And so it's really just become a way of life on the campus. It's not something that you have to, you know, really work very hard to do. It just, it works and it makes sense. And so, um, the kids, they want to lead. I mean, it's hard to imagine, but there are first graders who lead, like, the rating in their classroom. They come back from specials and they said, well, we're gonna give our class a three today because we had to be reminded in PE of what we do when we play this game. And so this is what we think we could do better next time. And so, um, that's an example of rating, if you heard that, um, in Alicia's presentation. And so a lot of, um, students recognizing others and affirming them for the good things that they do and that they notice. And so it's not just the adults having to do the work, and everyone wants that from their peers, right? And so it's just a great way to recognize, um, the good things that the kids see and that we see, and, um, the staff just really, I mean, they just, they see all of the, the great things that have come from it. So it's been wonderful.
Glad to hear it.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay, so before we go to, uh, 5C2, that I think we have a, you have a sheet right there?
Thank you, Alicia.
We have someone that wants to address the board with a comment, Ms. Hertzler?
I did, but I just decided to withdraw my request for comment. I'm just gonna listen to Alicia. I already had a meeting, so I'm just, I'm just gonna listen.
You're, you're up. Do you need this still? Do you still need this?
I don't, I don't. So if you want to push that.
Let me do that before, before you start speaking, because this noise will drive you nuts.
It's up to you, so just as a reference for you. Thank you again. All right. So what I want to share with you today is just, um, basically, um, how the district, uh, is planning to review the Blue Bonnet curriculum, um, because of the, um, concerns out there regarding the, uh, religious, uh, remarks and, and references in it. So basically, the plan is to, first, we need to get the materials in our hands, and, uh, our goal, our, our shipping, based on what we know in the past for shipping, we anticipate to have these materials in our hands by May. So that is kind of when we want to start this process, or get a, get a timeline set in May. Uh, the process may not be able to start till June, because I do want to include teacher leaders in this. And, um, I don't want to pull them out of the classroom. And so, um, to do that, we're gonna have to probably wait till school gets out to do this. But basically, in a nutshell, what we want to do is take the materials, I want the teacher leaders, they are the content experts. They know their teaks better than anybody. But I want them to take their units and review their units for anything that they feel meets, uh, this religious references. Um, note it, mark it, highlight it, whatever they need to do, and then establish a team of people that are gonna come in and say, okay, this is the things that we see, how are we going to address it? And there's different ways that we can do this. Um, what I've given you is some examples of how we can solve some of these or possible solutions to it. So, um, what I have previewed so far and what I have seen is a lot of this is just unnecessary text. So basically, it's, it'll say something, and then there's a blurb in there that is just referencing Christianity in some way or the Bible in some way. And it's not necessary to what's being taught. So an easy way would to be just to remove that line or that remark in there and keep going on with your lesson. Um, another way is a lot of this information is also in the teacher background, so it's in the teacher manual. And it just tells the teacher to remind students that this is a biblical story, remind students this. And again, it's not necessary for what's being taught, so it can be, we just, we redact it. We tell the teachers, this is something that you're not gonna share. Um, there are cases where it's, um, like a picture card, and so the student looks at the picture, and the teacher's explaining what the picture is and, and the history behind it, or whatever they're talking about. It may be a historical figure. Um, there are cases where it's, um, like a picture card, and so the student looks at the picture, and the teacher's explaining what the picture is, and, and the history behind it, or whatever they're talking about, it may be a historical figure, or something with science, but the card, maybe the picture is not appropriate, or the references that it's, the text is not, uh, appropriate, so we can easily remove just that card and that text, and again, the lesson can, can continue without having a huge impact in the whole thing. Um, there is an example of removing just a whole lesson, so these units have ten to fifteen lessons in them, so you're talking about over the course of a year, they have nine to ten to eleven units, and then within those units, there's ten to fifteen lessons in each unit, and in some of these cases, the u, the lessons, although they, they all compile at the end, to remove one in some cases does not affect the whole unit. Um, there's an example in first grade, um, it talks about the creation, talks about the books, Book of Genesis, um, that's an example to me, where if we remove that whole lesson, it has no impact on that whole unit, or any of the unit assessment at the end, because they're doing some writing with it, and so that's an example of how we could do that. Um, there, let's see, I'm just trying to make sure I hit all the different options here for you, um, lesson, portion, um, removing the text, um, so those are basically examples of how we could do this, so the goal would be, again, have a team, we go through it, grade by grade, see what needs to be changed, adjusted, removed, left, because there could be cases where it is, like, written in a factual way about histories, so it may need to be left for that reason, but that's the termination of the team, and then come back to you in July with a, basically a black line outline, master line of, here's the things that we addressed, and here's our, here's how we're going to fix it. I would like to have at least the first semester at a minimum done by then, I, the goal would be the whole year, but I also have to consider that teachers are off contract, and I'm gonna be asking them to come up to help me do this, so I've gotta be, uh, conservative of their time as well, so minimum first semester done, hopefully the whole year, we've, we've gone through the whole thing.
Did you say that region three was somehow?
Region three also is giving a support on this too as well, yes.
And this, refresh me, um, K through five curriculum?
K through five, E L A, it's the, it's the, um, R L A units, yes, it's, it's, we're not, we haven't found anything in the skills part of it, uh, K two has skills, um, we haven't found anything in the skills, but it's mainly the, it's mainly the R L A, but we're gonna look at math too, just to make sure we're covering ourselves, because we're doing math in one, two, three, but, so we're gonna, we're gonna check it all, we're not gonna miss any pieces, but.
Did you say E L A, English, Language Arts, so no science, no social studies?
No, so, no, no, but a lot of this is, the, the content that's being taught is a science concept, right? We're teaching the R L A teaks with a science topic, or with a history topic, so that's where the, a lot of this comes in.
So is your plan for the teens, like, first grade would have their own team, and second grade would have their own team?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes.
Do you feel like you'll have enough teacher support during the summer to get this done?
I do, I do. Yes, I do.
I understand we're not wanting to teach creation and such.
Correct, correct.
Kindergarten, but like, we're concerned about Da Vinci's work?
So The Last Supper is the, is the, that's an example, and, uh, the fifth grade unit, they, it's about the Renaissance period, and it talks about the art, and, uh, it does talk, it has The Last Supper, and it does reference, there are some, some pieces of text in there that probably is not necessary, um, could you still use the art, possibly, but take out the references of? There's text, basically, there's, I wish I would have quoted it more specifically, but there, there is, but yes, that is one example of it in fifth grade.
All right.
Any other questions?
Sounds like y'all got some work to do.
Yes.
And then we feel like the curriculum itself is worthwhile?
I do, because, because when you look at it as a whole.
That's kind of what I was wondering, is it worth, is it worth all this?
So, so, one, well, one, the, the, what, what we're doing right now is not working, okay? Our, our reading scores, our, we do not have, we have too many students not reading on level, so we need to address that. We also teach a lot of things in isolation, we also spend a tremendous lot of time, amount of time, teachers having to find supplemental resources to supplement the basal that they have, because it's just really outdated, it really is not meeting the needs of what we need to meet. This teaches more thematically, so it's basically taking those teaks, and we're teaching them over and over and over again, um, over and over again, um, so it's cycling back through them, so it's not like we're teaching one thing at one time, and then we don't teach it again, and then we move on to something else, so this is a way for us to constantly circle back to all those teaks and teach them basically in an application way versus just in isolation, so that's, that's a very important thing. Uh, and I will also say that, looking at all the units and everything, there are many units in there that don't have anything, like, so while there's a lot of reference, it seems to be isolated in certain places.
Who put this curriculum together?
Um, well, it started as a version of Amplify.
Okay.
And then T E A purchased that, and then T E A made its revisions to it, so.
T E A, this is one of theirs, so T E A owns Amplify now, this is of the Amplify tree?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, but it's, but what we are seeing is a lot of these changes are in this Blue Bonnet version that weren't necessarily in the Amplify.
Has T E A made any effort to address any of these?
Uh, my understanding is they had public hearing and listened to public comments and everything prior to them approving this in November.
Okay.
And actually, the State Board of Education approved this.
Yes.
And Alicia, I just handed, Alicia, I know she's got it, it's got all of the approved curriculums coming out.
That was, that was my next question, so we have Amplify, or this is the Amplify version of four, three K, whatever, what are the other, like, I know we have some other options, like math.
So there's, let's see, uh, Savis has, uh, Texas My View Literacy.
That's not owned by T E A though?
No, no, Blue Bonnet's the only one owned by T E A, that I'm aware of.
Right.
Yes.
There's not many, uh, as I've looked through, and of course Alicia's the expert, so I'm gonna give her a chance to look through that.
Well, that's pretty much it.
Well, that, my point to you is that, when you look through the E L A approved models from the State Board of Education, there's not much other choice.
No.
Now, they do have some in math, but, and they do have, they've got like three or four pages, but many of those are for E S L only, or there's not a whole lot of options that, um, is on that sheet, and.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much Savis and Blue Bonnet for E L A, that's the Spanish version, then there's some phonics, um, Amplify phonics, um, let's see, this is Curriculum and Associates, uh, Texas Magnetic Reading Foundations, Just Write Reader, so that's, or Reading Horizons, but these are, these are just phonics programs, there's a couple more, but they're not, um, they're not the.
And they're not all K five?
Curriculum, no, 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 they're not.
I just think it's interesting that they, they had to throw in religion.
I, I can't speak for, for their reasoning for it, obviously, but, um.
Is there something coming down the line?
Is our goal to take out all aspects of religious information in there?
In any way that it is appearing to be in an indoctrinating way, or it's just not necessary to be in there.
So you're gonna, y'all are gonna put teachers who live through that?
Yes, oh, yes.
And now on present, present that to us, and we'll get to say, this is indoctrination, indoctrination.
Alicia, do you want to tell them kind of about how we're doing the, um, internalization now with Amplify, because I think that helps to, um, so it doesn't seem so overwhelming, like, so much work, because we already are doing the work, so to speak?
Yes, so, so currently, the teachers already, are what they do, they call internalizing their lessons, so they're expected to have already gone through their whole lessons before they meet, uh, weeks of lessons at a time, before they meet in their P L Cs, and in their P L C, then they discuss any concerns they have, any misconceptions that might come up, uh, things that they feel might need to be changed or adjusted, um, so they're already doing that, um, every week.
But they don't, but they don't have this in their hands.
They don't, they do not have this in their hands, no, no, so they're already kind of used to, to doing this to some degree, and as I share with Mr. Callahan, this approach, not to this depth, but teachers, no matter what they're teaching, are constantly looking at their, their resources before they teach it, to see if it's appropriate or not, and what they need to change, so so to, to do that beforehand is a very common practice, um, for teachers, so.
Okay.
And we pay, we already pay planning time in the summer, that kind of stuff, to do this?
Um, well, that's, we haven't said it on the, we haven't said any of that yet, but that's the plan to do, yes.
But we have to, I mean, we have, then we build a calendar with quite a few days before school starts, too.
Yes, but we were, I'm hoping to have this done way before that.
All right.
Yes.
Good luck. You ready to move on, anything else? Okay, we'll move on, we're going through discussion and action items.
Yes.
Six B one.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, no, we're good, so, uh, board members, um, if you'll look on there, um, there's an agenda item to consider and take possible action to, to select a construction delivery method for all twenty twenty five district bond projects, I need to be clear to the newspaper, the radio, everyone out there who's listening, this process, the construction delivery process, is probably a six-week-long process. If we wait to set this process up until after the bond passes, then we're looking at the middle of July before we're able to start any process, any projects of any, of any scope. All this is doing is setting up the process to go out and look for R F Qs, for architects and engineers, R F Qs for construction managers at risk. This by no means requires the district to dedicate any funds, or dedicate any monies, or choose anybody. This just goes out and provides people an opportunity, knowing that there's no financial incentive for them to submit, they just will submit this information to us, so that if the community decides that a bond is the direction they want to go, then we will already have that process complete, and then we can begin to act on the, the community's wishes. So I want to make sure that everybody's aware that this is nothing other than setting up the process, notice it says, to select a meth, a delivery method, not to select the deliverer of the method, but to select the delivery method that we would choose to use.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Everybody know what we're doing?
Yeah.
So the motion would be.
I think there's a motion in your.
Um, uh, the motion would be to select two-step construction manager at-risk C M A R procurement for the district twenty twenty five bond projects as providing the best value for the district, and that would, we'd be, uh, authorizing the superintendent with the assistant district council to prepare and issue a request, well, that would be the.
Yes, so the, the first, the first motion would be to select a two-step construction manager at-risk process.
That would be the next one there, okay, everybody know what the motion is now, is to select two-step construction manager at-risk.
I, I'll make, I'll move, I'll make a motion to accept a two-step C M A R as the construction process, or construction di, delivery method.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, anybody opposed, motion passes. Okay, we can move on to the.
Well, the next one just, it just gives me the authority to go out and tell Mr., um, Wells to set up newspaper advertising to go out and do a request for qualifications for architects and engineering design firms. Again, there's no commitment on the district's part, again, there's no money being spent, this is just for us to identify the process that if a bond were to pass, we would have these processes underway, and then be able to go forward. If the bond does not pass, there's no money owed, exchanged, anything, and all of the architects and engineers are well aware of this process, they do it frequently, they just put out their request for qualifications. And I'm assuming that most of you, like, Rich, you've probably done this before, and Mr. Cannell, you've probably been a part of this, as probably has Mr. Irwin at some point.
Can y'all see the request for qualifications for architect and engineer, you got that?
I got it here.
Okay.
I'm moving to issue a R F Q for architectural engineering design and construction administration for the twenty twenty five bond project.
And for the superintendent to establish a process for evaluation to receive and evaluate the proposals, including appointment of a committee for such purpose, and bring the ranking of the.
I didn't see all that.
I want it all on there.
There's a committee on.
On the record. Everybody got that?
Yes, sir.
Raise the motion.
I'll move as presenting.
James got a second there.
Well, but Mr., Mr. Dubrock, you have been on that committee before, so.
Is there any discussion, everybody understands the motion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, anybody opposed, motion passes.
And the third one is to, uh, move to accept the Davis Bacon wage rate, and you, you had the same process back in December.
Right, everybody remembers back with the turf, we, we had a similar motion, and I'm gonna read that, that the board adopted preventing wages, wage raging, wage rates published by the United States Department of Labor and according to Davis Bacon Act, and its subsequent amendments excluding fringe benefits in connection with the construction of the twenty twenty five bond project. Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Any, any, Ed made a second.
Your hand went up first.
James made a motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, anybody opposed, motion passes.
And to be clear again, I just want to make sure that the, all the board has authorized me to do is to go out and look at these proposals, these R F Qs, et cetera, this is by no way committing the district to anything, or committing any district funds.
Understood.
Okay, we're moving on now to government, governance. And we have consideration approval to take necessary actions to declare the May thirteen twenty five board election unopposed, and candidate selected.
That's correct, so we have, uh, three positions, position three, which is Mr. Cannell, position four, which, um, I think Mr. Ryan is here, Clayton Ryan.
Stand up, Clayton.
So Mr. Ryan is the, uh, unopposed candidate in position four, and then Mr. Russell will be position five, that he's taking over for Mr. Irwin, and, uh, Mr. Ryan is taking over for Mr. Vialle. And so, the, this, this motion allows us to declare all three positions elected without having to go through an election.
That's a good thing, we don't have an election.
So move, good job, Mr. Irwin.
Second by Kathy. Is there any discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, anybody opposed, motion passes. Okay, last one.
The last one is, uh, six C two, which, uh, I apologize to the board profusely in one of the resolutions, I mistakenly condensed through working with the legal counsel to name the people for the early resignation as chapter twenty one contracts, thinking that that included everybody, but in fact, I should have just said professional contract employees, because we do have a small number of individuals who are professionals, who have contracts, but they're not qualified as chapter twenty one, so I recommend what we've done the previous two times, we have done the early resignation, it was for professional contracts, it does not require a resolution, we can simply amend it through board action, and that's what I'm asking the board to do tonight.
Got motion?
And it would retroactively impact anybody who's turned in the resignation, that met with our intention, at least what my intention was, for the early resignation.
Yep.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Either one.
Any discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, anybody opposed, motion passes. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Okay, got any review items?
No, sir.
Close session?
Close session, yes, sir. And then when we come out, there will be only one item on there, which is to look at administrative contracts. So if any of the administrators want to stay, you can stay and hear it. If nobody wants to stay, I guess we'll.
I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a big deal. Time is now 7:01, and we will adjourn in the closed session.